Call to order, the regular city commission meeting for the city of Dickinson for Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. Let the record show, we're missing one commissioner, Commissioner Baer. This evening, we have some special guests with us, and they are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and before we begin, I would like to invite them up to the podium, and Mr. Joel Schrum is going to introduce our PAC as they lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I am Commissar Joel Schrum for PAC 112 here in Dickinson, and these are all young men from our PAC, they're going to introduce themselves quick before we go through it. We'll start with the oldest one.
Hi, I'm Kyron Trum, and my favorite thing about scouting is the canoeing part of it, and I'm second class in the Boy Scouts now.
Hi, my name is Landon Berger, I'm a Weeblo, my favorite part about scouting is camping.
I'm Peter Morowski, my favorite, and I am a Weeblo, and my favorite part about scouting is camping.
Okay, and then Kyron said he'll lead us off in the pledge, so here you go Kyron.
Scout salute those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And thank you, young men.
Thanks for letting us come out.
I did invite them to stay for the whole meeting, but they decided that they want to go, so. Thank you so much. Okay, so the first item up this evening is the order of business. City Administrator Dossinger is on vacation, so filling in for him this evening will be Deputy City Administrator Carlson, and the order of business, Mrs. Carlson, are there any changes?
President Decker and Commissioners, there is no change.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the order of business for Mrs. Carlson? Look for a motion to approve the order of business.
So move.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the order of business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is a consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing no discussion, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Guess that's a good reminder for everyone to turn their phones down, as well me. Moving along, we'll move into administration and finance. First item up this evening, we have a proclamation for our Make-A-Wish, and this is World Wish Day 2023, whereas Make-A-Wish was founded by family and friends of seven-year-old Chris Gracious, who got his wish to be a police officer on April 29th, 1980. And whereas the organization known as Make-A-Wish has since granted more than 500,000 wishes worldwide, operating in every community in the United States, in communities in nearly 50 countries worldwide. And whereas four forward-thinking and generous North Dakotans brought the mission of creating life-changing wishes for children ages two and a half to 18 years old with critical illnesses to our state in 1985. And whereas Make-A-Wish North Dakota has granted more than 1,000 wishes in our state over the last 38 years, delivering hope and joy back into the lives of children with critical illnesses. And whereas, when a wish is granted, a child replaces fear with confidence, anxiety with hope, and sadness with joy. And whereas, research has shown that wishes can improve a child's quality of life and produce better health outcomes. And whereas, Make-A-Wish depends on referrals, local volunteers, and donors to realize its vision of reaching every eligible child to make their wishes come true. Now therefore, as Mayor of Dickinson, I hereby proclaim April 29th, 2023, World Wish Day in the city of Dickinson, and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal to be affixed. And I would look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
I would move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll get this to you, Mrs. Carlson, eventually, tonight. Our next item up is an item that we supported last year, the Behavioral Health Summit, put on by Vision West. Last year, it was at this time in Watford City, and they got bombarded with snow, much like possibly going to happen to the rest of the state, not us. Anyway, this summit this year is in June, so we are looking, or I guess I am looking for commission to once again support this behavioral health in Energy Country. And last year, we gave $2,500 as a sponsor, and I think that would be appropriate amount, unless we want to do something else. There's different, in your PAC, there's different levels, so right now, we're just set to be at the same amount as last year.
The only, I guess, question I would have is, because we're hosting it this year, would we like to, should we bump up our sponsorship based on that, but be a good host city?
And I'm fine with that, too, and with that, the one thing that I think, if we do that, we get a booth at the exhibit, which I think the city could use to show some of our, what we're doing in the city, and possibly even advertise some of our positions, so.
Would that be included with the hire, and it's just not included with our current level?
No, the current level, we just, there's mentions in their social media, on their website, we get some tickets, complimentary event tickets, so bumping it up would take us to the booth level, so.
And who usually attends? Have you attended this?
I have, I have attended in the past, so, but I'm, I'm also on the board of, just to be, you know, upfront, I'm on the board of Vision West, so if somebody else wants to, to attend, I mean, any other commissioners want to attend?
And the youth commission actually attended last year.
Right.
And spoke and, like, presented, so they could perhaps maybe man some time in a booth, too.
Right. And that, I'll tell you this, the youth commission last year, that was one of the favorite things at the expo last year, was just having our youth commissioners there, there along with Watford City's youth commissioners, and they, it, the attendees really enjoyed listening to them, so, but. And Mrs. Carlson, we had talked about this, she has funding for this, so this, it comes out of ARP with source, so we could, we could bump it to the 5,000, so.
I'd make the motion to be a champion sponsor at the $5,000 level at the Behavioral Summit, Behavioral Health Summit.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to be a champion sponsor at the Behavioral Summit in Coal, Energy Country, I almost said Coal Country. And a second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item this evening, and this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson, we have a gaming site authority, or authorizations.
Authorizations, thank you, President Decker. Yes, we have a few of them, the first one is the Dickinson Charities, the Astoria Bar and Grill, and with this gaming site authorization for the Astoria Bar and Grill, it's effective July 1st, '23 through June 30th of '24, and their gamings will be prize board, raffles, pull tab jar, electronic pull tab devices, and 21, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Mrs. Wanko, these, the Dickinson, since it's under one charity, Dickinson Charities, do we need to approve each one separately?
I don't think that would be necessary.
Okay. Why don't you just go through all of them, Mrs. Carlson, and then we'll?
That will be fine. So the next one is the Player's Sports Bar and Grill. Again, the effective date is July 1st of '23 through June 30th of '24, for the electronic pull tab devices, raffles, pull tab jar, pull tab dispensing device, and then prize board. The third one would be The Rock, and this one is also effective July 1st of '23 through June 30th of '24, and includes bingo, raffles, pull tab jar, pull tab dispensing device, electronic pull tab devices, prize board, and 21. And then the last one is actually Dickinson Charities, and theirs is effective July 1st through 20, of '23 through June 30th of '24, and that's for their raffles. So all, it would be four of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson or staff on this gaming site authorization for Dickinson Hearing no questions or discussion, I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve the Dickinson Charities gaming site authorizations.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item this evening, we have a liquor license transfer, Town and Country Liquor, and Mrs. Carlson?
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. So this is a liquor license transfer for Town and Country Liquor, located at 1218 West Verlars Street. It's a commercial on-off sale with Sunday permit. The license transfer would transfer from Dawn and Linda Paul to Casey Paul, and background has been completed, and the fees have been paid, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson or staff on this license transfer? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up, we have a Chapter 2 amendment, this consideration to approve the second reading and final passage of ordinance number 1770, Mrs. Carlson?
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This, as stated, is the second reading, final passage, and this is concerning Chapter 2 as the library board terms, and as the first reading was done, there was no changes, and it just brings them in line with the North Dakota Sentry Code, which is July 1st for their terms. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson or staff, ordinance 1770? This is the second reading and final passage. If there are no discussion or questions, I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up is Chapter 18 amendment, this will be handled by our Solid Waste Recycling Manager, Mr. Prowse, and City Attorney Wanko, this is the consideration to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance 1771.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. As we talked in first reading, Chapter 18 codes are relating to the garbage collection codes. Majority of our changes include recycling, with the exception, after first reading, we did do an addition to Section 18.08.030, letter F, reads, "Tree branches and trimmings shall be taken to a recycling site, or the Solid Waste Bailing Facility, or any location designated by the city." Attorney Wanko has reviewed these changes, and staff recommends approval.
The first reading was last meeting, right, when I was absent?
Correct.
Are there, I looked through here, are there any fee changes?
There are no fee changes tied to the codes.
Okay. Sometimes with all the line-outs, I miss things, so. Any other questions on 1771? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
I would move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions on 1771? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Next up is Chapter 21 amendment, this is a consideration to approve the second reading and final passage of ordinance 1772, and this will be handled by Police Chief Siani and City Attorney Wanko.
Mr. President, Commissioners, in front of you, as President Decker indicated, is ordinance 1772, which does reference the changes to Chapter 21, which is the administrative code regarding the authority to sell tobacco. Just to highlight some points from the first reading, we've added a restriction regarding a smoke and vape shop penalty, which prohibits anyone under the age of 18 entering and remaining in a smoke or vape shop as defined by the code. We have updated our definitions, we have added provisions regarding compliance checks, and per this commission's request, we have increased the penalties for tobacco retailers found in violation of this code section. There was a question asked previously at the last meeting about the e-cigarettes and tobacco, and whether that fell into the definition. I had to do a little bit of research, but based on what I can tell, the Federal Drug Administration does include e-cigarettes in the definition of tobacco because they do contain nicotine. And the way that our definitions and our section is defined, that does involve tobacco products, tobacco products is subsequently regarded in the vape shop, so it's all interconnected, and so Chief Siani and I feel like we're covered with regard to that question about the definition of tobacco and e-cigarettes. Other than that, there has been no other, excuse me, no other changes or additions or revisions since the first reading, and staff would recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Has anyone reached out from any of these businesses, you know, that dispense to anyone, and any concerns with our changes?
Our office certainly hasn't received any since the initial meeting.
Okay, and then our restriction now of anyone under 18 on premise that's in line with Sentry Code?
Yes, and we can certainly be more restrictive in that respect, as it relates to the Sentry Code, and I think in discussions internally, the PD with their SRO program are going to have to spearhead this with the high schools and make students aware of these new restrictions, and of course, I think Cap, excuse me, Chief Siani has done a very good job reaching out to local retailers to make them aware that these changes are coming, and so I don't anticipate any surprises in that regard.
And the fine for that being on premises is $100, there's no, like, strike against them for, like, the sale, it's just that on the premises, it's $100.
We have set it up so that there would be an administrative fee of $100, but we have also added in a provision that allows this commission to take those types of violations in consideration to determine whether you're going to continue to authorize the license for that retailer.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Chief Siani, any, any further comments?
No, like I said, I expected more comments from the retailers out there, I did get, I had very few and very poor attendance at the actual stakeholders meeting we did hold, so they had their opportunity if there was concern.
Okay. Any further questions, Commissioners? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. All right, our next item up is Chapter 25. Chief Siani, you don't have anything for that? All right. You're just getting your steps in, I know, so. This is ordinance 1773. Mrs. Wanko?
Thank you, Mr. President. In front of you, you have, as you indicated, ordinance 1773. Chapter 25 relates to the criminal penalties and section regarding the sale of tobacco. Just a brief overview of what changes we are seeing in the ordinance, we have added and reorganized the definition section, we've added a penalty section for minors violating the smoke and vape shop restriction that we just discussed, we've increased the age of carding to age 30 as opposed to 29, based on federal regulations, and we have also, per this commission's request, increased the fines for retailers selling tobacco to minors. We haven't had any additional comments since the first reading, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Wanko. Chief Siani, anything?
No, we did rock, paper, scissor this, and she is one who lost.
Okay.
That's how this worked.
All right.
I think I remembered a little differently, but.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
City Attorney Wanko, with the cigar lounge bill passing, we're going to have to make some changes to our code in regards to that, no, correct? Or do we have the choice as the municipality to determine whether or not we're going to allow those? I'm just asking because we're dealing with our tobacco ordinance right now, so.
Commissioner Oder, I'm not aware, did it pass?
Well, it passed the Senate and it came out of the House, so I'd be, I guess, Bergam hasn't signed it yet, I don't think, but.
Well, if and when it does, and we get official word, yes, we'll probably have to take that into consideration. I think that this commission will have to decide whether it wants to go that far, obviously the cities can be more restrictive if they choose to. I know that was a topic of discussion that was brought up by one retailer when we did meet, so I think we're going to have to cross that bridge when we come to it, and we'll have to be open to ideas and see how that will affect our code, and if we have to make changes, we certainly can, if the commission desires to do so.
You're tasked with reporting back to the commission now if it passes.
Okay. Will do. Well, it wouldn't take effect till July 1st, anyway, so.
All right. Any further questions on 1773?
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up are job descriptions, and first item up is a solid waste operator 2, and this will be handled by HR Director Nomenak. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Okay, so first up is the solid waste operator 2 job description. This is a new position for us, it was approved with the 2023 budget. This is an achievable position from an operator to an operator 2. Some things that follow suit with this is the education experience, we are requiring three years in a public works operator position in order to move into the operator 2, and then you see the special requirements, valid North Dakota Class B, commercial driver's license with automatic transmission and air brakes, the North Dakota DEQ landfill operator certification, the NIMS ICS certifications of 100, 200, 700, CPR first aid, AED, defensive driving course, specialized equipment training for the certificates for the operator 2 class request form, classification request form, and the SWANA certification, one or more of the following landfill operations from, landfill operations, the waste screening, collections, operation, or recycling, one of those. So this position is in grade 13, it is a non-exempt position, and this just kind of reiterates the achievable component, everything that I just mentioned for certifications, as well as the equipment training, they must have 14 points from the equipment training list that they have outlined in public works, and then it would require the supervisor, the solid waste director, solid waste manager, and the public works director signing off on that recommendation, in order for them to move to that position. And then also, we have the solid waste foreman job description, this is actually just a title change and a grade change, this was our senior solid waste operator position in the past, and the 2023 budget approved the reorganization for public works and the change for this position, so that will move from grade 13 to grade 14. That's all I have, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenak. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenak on the solid waste 2 or the solid waste foreman? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on the solid waste 2.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. On the solid waste foreman, look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope, you don't have a report. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is our GT Architectural Contract with, for the museum expansion, this will be handled by Museum Center Director Furman. Welcome.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. Bringing forward for consideration tonight is the finalized contract with GT Architecture for Museum Schematic and Conceptual Design Services, services, excuse me, which we recommended and the commission approved and moved forward with some, three or four weeks ago, I guess. It's been, it's a standard AIA contract, which has been reviewed by Attorney Wanko and massaged to a certain extent, if you'd want to speak to that at all.
Absolutely, so these standard contracts have certain language in them that have to be taken out specifically with regard to indemnification as well as dispute resolution, so usually there's language in there that requires arbitration, but in the event that we are bound to arbitrate and in some respects doesn't offer coverage for that, so we have to modify those contracts, and they were very good about working with the city to adhere the city to adhere to our request, so I think it's in a good place, and I would recommend approval.
Okay.
Just further information, again, the contract amount is $14,800 for these basic services, and I would anticipate we would finish the concept and schematic designs probably by the end of June, if not a little sooner.
Okay. I saw the percentage, that's what I was gonna ask, the total cost, because the percentages were left blank in there.
Right. This is just for the, the concept and schematic designs. The next step after approval of a design and the commission would, you know, have to authorize going forward for them to start to put together, uh, the, the formal design, but they'll have a ballpark cost at the end of this.
Right, and we, we haven't assigned any budget. We want them, we want them to give us what they think it's gonna cost.
Exactly. This is kind of a fact-finding exercise as well.
Good. Any other questions on this contract? If there are no other questions or comments, I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, it is five o'clock, so we will move into the public hearing and public comments. Our first public hearing will be a Chapter 23 amendment, and this will be a consideration to approve the first reading and the ordinance. Let me grab the number here. Should be, um, 1775, right? So this will be seventeen, the first reading is 1775, and this is Police Chief Siani, did you draw this one? Rock, paper, scissors?
I did. Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. A little bit of back, backfill on this authority for, um, we're gonna be moving into having some, after proper training, animal control's gonna be taking some parking responsibilities. There was nothing in ordinance that says that someone who is unsworn couldn't issue, go through the enforcement regarding parking regulations. However, we wanted to add this verbiage, which makes it allowable for the Chief of Police to designate someone to be able to enforce the parking ordinance, and that's what we're kind of moving into, is for animal control to take care of some of those, uh, non-critical calls for service regarded, related to parking. Recommend approval.
I was gonna say, at one time, years ago, we had a parking person.
We did. We could authorize another cushman, too, so we could...
I've seen what Bismarck drives around, and I think it would be hung up this year a lot. I think Bismarck's hung up a lot. But, um, so this would be, you said that animal control would be doing this?
Right, and exclusive animal control right now, but we could designate anyone who's not sworn to issue parking some of this.
Any other questions for Chief Siani or Mrs. Winko? Again, this is, there are no further questions. This is the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to come forward and has any comments on Ordinance 1775, uh, this is relating to parking violations and who is to enforce it, please come forward, state your name, and let your concerns be known to this city commission. If you're watching online, 701-456-7006, you may dial in, and our control center will patch you through. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public have any concerns or questions about the first reading of Ordinance 1775 relating to parking violations and its enforcement in the city of Dickinson? Seeing no one from the public has any comments or concerns on Ordinance 1775, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions for city staff? Again, this is a consideration to approve first reading of Ordinance 1775. I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk, second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item up is the public comments. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward, has any comments for the city commission about items on the agenda or not on the agenda, welcome you to the podium. Please introduce yourself for the public.
Good evening, City Council and Authorities. My name is Jennifer Schaefer. I'm the Tobacco Prevention Coordinator with the Southwestern District Health Unit, and I'm here just to go over some proposed changes to the Dickinson Tobacco Ordinance. First, I wanted to commend you all for your strong local tobacco prevention ordinance. The city of Dickinson has adopted language that protects the citizens against secondhand smoke and works to protect youth from using tobacco. You are a leader in the state in protecting your citizens and especially our youth. I'd, I would like to ask you to consider adding language to the tobacco ordinance that would address drive-through tobacco sales and mobile vending. Mobile and drive-through vending would be cumbersome for compliance checks. Dickinson has struggled some in the past with tobacco compliance checks, and having drive-through sales would make it more difficult to monitor and enforce, and I've sent to your emails the results of all of our, um, tobacco compliance checks from 2015 on to 2023, most recent. Students right now have a high use rate of vaping as well as other tobacco use. We don't want to normalize it by having this availability. Dickinson does not allow drive-through sales of alcohol, and you can proudly say that since 1978, you have not allowed that. Let's mirror that with our tobacco and not allow drive-through or mobile vending. Bismarck and Fargo have passed ordinances reflecting no tobacco sales in mobile units. When you start chipping away at strong youth access ordinance or smoke-free ordinance, other special circumstance will be asked to be allowed. So, continue to be a leader here and throughout our state of North Dakota in treating all businesses equally and protecting all citizens equally. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. I've passed out the resolution from our Board of Health, um, preventing drive-through sales of electronic nicotine delivery systems.
Just one question, is there any cities that allow drive-through sales that you are aware of?
Not that I'm aware of right now.
I was told maybe Mandan, but...
I'd have to get back to you on that, um, Councilman, but...
Miss, Mrs. Winko, we, we don't have in our ordinance where they could set up a mobile dispensary.
No, and, and I, to answer your question, President Decker, we had looked at this, and, and I think, um, we, if we took approval of this and we looked at this from a zoning perspective, and we did not find, one, a restriction in Chapter 21, nor was there a restriction in Chapter 25, and I don't believe that there was a restriction in the zoning code that would prohibit these types of sales. So, I'm also not aware of any, I would presume that there's a possibility if they did want to try to do some sort of mobile unit, that might require some special use permit or something, depending on the location and so forth, but I'm, you know, Josh may be able to weigh in a little bit on that, because I do think that he was the one that looked into that a little bit on the, the zoning side with the permit applications, but as of right now, there's nothing in our code that prohibits drive-through sales of nicotine products.
Yeah, I guess I'll just echo the statement that City Attorney Winko provided, and we did look through our zoning ordinance, and, and there was nothing included in there, so...
I have a silly question. What is mobile vending? Is it like a food truck that would sell cigarettes or something?
Okay. It would be. It would be. So drive-through would be more of your permanent structure where as mobile would be. You could liken it to a food truck.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public have any comments that were not on our agenda this evening? Or, um, items that were on the agenda?
Thank you, President and Commissioners. My name is Ruth Haley. I'm resident of Dickinson. On Tuesday, March 14th, after attending a library board meeting, I went to look at a display in the library. I was surprised to see a display with alarmist signage telling me to check out books before they would be gone. These signs claimed that proposed legislation in the state legislature would remove a number of books from the shelves of the library, and the display contained a number of example books and videos which would conceivably be banned. Copies of the bills were made available. In addition, a QR code was on the signage that could take you directly to a form, so you could let your elected officials know that they should vote no on the proposed legislation. This disturbed me on several levels, because our Dickinson Public Library is a taxpayer-funded and city government-managed entity. To have a publicly funded library try to affect the political process in this way, to try and directly influence my political decisions, is unethical. I am grateful to the library staff, however. As of this afternoon, all of the signage on the book's displays has been removed. I applaud the library's decision to let people read and research the legislation and make decisions for themselves and how they want to respond, and I have examples of the signage available for anyone who wants to look at what the display used to look like, and I thank you, and if you have any questions for me.
Was city staff, outside of the library, made aware?
City staff outside of the library made aware of...
That this, these signs?
I...
City administration, did you contact anybody from the city administration?
I did not contact anyone in city administration.
Or, a city commissioner?
No, I have not.
Okay.
So, Mrs. Haley, so, did you, you brought this to the attention of the librarian?
I did not bring it directly to the attention of the library. I believe another individual did, but...
All right.
Commissioner Otterman, I can weigh in on this to some degree. I became, I was made aware, um, through another channel that this was occurring, uh, and I had communicated with Ms. Carlson, and we had discussed it with the library director, and it was our recommendation that the, uh, display be taken down, uh, and for the purpose that we, and based on prior advice given by me to this commission, is that the commission in this city, especially the commission, remain neutral in this process while the legislative process worked itself out, and that's the neutral position and the position and the advice that I gave this board, and I stand behind it, and that is why the, uh, display was taken down. And Ms. Carlson and I were in agreement in that decision, and as soon as it was brought to our attention, that was the action that was taken, based on the prior, uh, advice that was given to this commission and letting that legislative process work through, uh, and it's almost concluded, and whatever comes of it, comes of it, but that is the reason why it was taken down.
And I appreciate that, so that our citizenry can make their own choices.
All right. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public have any comments, questions, concerns on items not on the agenda or on our present agenda? Again, if you're watching online, 701-456-7006.
I have to lower this a little bit. Good evening, President Decker and Chairman. My name is Kimberly Ho, and I am a wife and a homeschool mom here in Dickinson to our three sons. Excuse me if my voice shakes, because my heart is beating. This is my first time ever sharing at a city commission meeting. Um, I have been a local citizen here in Dickinson since October 2020. My husband's job moved us here, and I have recently found myself involved, um, with the local Dickinson library since October of 2022, where I attended my first-ever library board meeting. Since October, October, I have decided, um, I would do my best to get involved at our local library. In the beginning of November 2022, I went down to the library and spoke with Renee Newton. I went down and I asked, um, how I might be eligible to sit on the library board. I was directed to a website, and from there filled out an application for eligibility and submitted it mid-November of 2022. At the end of November, I reached out to Rita Binstock here at City Hall to gather more information. Um, she informed me that the library board selection process, um, would happen, and I was told to wait and see. I didn't hear from Rita Binstock again, nor any of the library staff, nor the then-director Rita Ennin. As the library directorship changed in January of 2023, I decided to reach out to the new director, Dani Kappel, and meet with her to see if there was volunteer opportunities that I could partake in. We have met twice, and in our last meeting on March 30th of this year, she addressed the library board application further. We sat together and filled out the rest of the questionnaire application, furthering my eligibility to sit on the board. I have many concerns about the trajectory of our library, its programs and materials. I feel for the sake of inclusivity that the homeschool, faith-based, and historically conservative communities are being excluded. My hope is to assure that there are selections and programs that appeal to the interest of these said groups. Meeting with Dani has been pleasant and constructive, and I hope to work alongside of her and other library staff in the future, if given the opportunity to do so. I thank you for your time and for being willing to serve our community in the way that you do.
Just a quick question. What, when you filled the application out online, were you not able to complete it online?
Well, this is my first time doing anything like this. I, I filled out, um, a questionnaire online with my personal information, and I think that, um, it was like a second half of the application that Dani sat down with me, and she actually asked me questions and filled out the application, so I didn't actually physically fill that part out.
Okay. I'm, I'm just wondering if we need to maybe do something on our, on our end, like our website, on the, the, if somebody's wishing to, yeah, to revise the form so you can complete it without having to go in and...
And I think, like, uh, just a suggestion would be, like, you know how if you pay for something and you get a receipt in your email? I just was really unaware if my information had been received, and that is why I called City Hall initially.
That's a good suggestion.
So...
Well, and, and I apologize for the, the poor communication after you submitted your initial application. That is something that we've talked about at subsequent library board meetings, because there, there was a little bit of shift in the, in the, the approach to where, like, we're aligning with how the state does their appointments and stuff. Now, we, we approved that change to ordinance tonight, um, and I think people were expecting for those appointments to come in, like, January or February, um, and, and, and I, I apologize for the, the lack of communication to, to all the applicants, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any public comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing no one has any further comments, we'll close the public hearing. We'll move back into our regular agenda, and the first item up is the assessing of... We'll move back into our regular agenda, and the first item up is the assessing update. Mr. Hirschfeld will be presenting.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. We got our notices, evaluation notices of increases sent out last week. Just a little bit of an update to you. No, no big changes from the last update I gave earlier this year. But we did have five hundred and twenty-five properties that received a notice of increase, which means they got a value increase of at least three thousand dollars and ten percent. A big part of the properties receiving this, increases this year included residential properties that did receive a ten percent increase again to structure as they did last year. That resulted in about a six percent increase to total valuation for residential properties. That was required because we fell outside the ninety to a hundred percent tolerance. We were at eighty-six point seven percent. A five percent increase had us just below the ninety percent threshold. We had to give another five to, to make sure that we fell within that ninety percent range. I do want to let you know, let everybody else know that with that ten percent increase we gave last year, despite the increase, there was a decrease to everybody's taxes. So just because you get an increase in valuation doesn't mean you're going to get an increase in taxes. With our sales, it was kind of surprising with the, oh, everything you see in the news with the economy and everything. We had seventy-five percent of our sales happened in the first half of the year. However, the rest of the sales, the last twenty-five percent that happened in the second half of the year, did not see a change in value, really. I mean, the, the ratio was, was pretty much stable. We're chalking that up to a lack of sales out there, so a decrease in supply, and even if there was a slight decrease in, in demand, it, demand was still higher than what the supply was. And that makes sense, you know, in, in a short-term basis, if you think, if you've got a house with a three percent mortgage on it, maybe you're looking at upgrading your house or moving to a different part of town. You're not going to be willing to trade that three percent for a seven percent note. It would mean you're either buying less house, or your, your payment's going to go up more than just the difference in the house. You're also paying more interest. So in the short term, that, that actually makes a little sense to us. But we'll continue to monitor that for the twenty twenty-four valuation. Properties that, in Washington's fourth, received an increase, but there was also, that was our revaluation area. That got completed. Some properties went down that were overvalued, some properties that were undervalued received a larger increase than maybe they would have liked. We've been speaking to quite a few people from the Washington's fourth subdivision. And in a similar manner, some of the other parts of town that received larger corrections would have been properties that sold that we'd had assessed well below what their sale price was. Commercial sales fell in at ninety-one point three percent, so within tolerance, we elected to make no change to our commercial properties as a whole. There were a few properties here or there that saw some changes that we did have to, have to correct. Few apartment properties got left over that didn't get that increase last year that we had to put on this year, so they got the benefit of missing out on last year's increased valuation. With that, just a reminder that our Board of Equalization meeting is next Tuesday, the eleventh, at four thirty. So make sure if you can make it, you're all there, but the public as well. If you've got any concerns about your property valuation, please call us this week so we can go over your property record cards with you. And then by all means, anybody who'd like to attend, come watch our Board of Equalization meeting. And if you have any questions for me, I'll sure take that now.
Mr. Hirschfeld, the five hundred and twenty-five properties, how are they selected?
Those properties, again, are the ones that received a ten percent increase and a minimum of three thousand. So the, if you received a six percent increase, I mean, the, the ten percent to structure doesn't relate to total ten percent increase. That's a six percent increase. So that's below the ten percent.
But, but how are they selected?
Any, any property that, whose value went up by at least ten percent and three thousand dollars. So out of that, taxable, properties that were exempt that become taxable, those will receive one. New construction properties with, with the cost to build now will receive that. We also had some, oh, they, commercial properties, townhouse properties that were all together on one lot that were split into condominiums. So they changed from commercial to residential. That's an automatic trigger because they had a zero residential value last year, so they've got a residential value. So there was eighty-six properties out of that five hundred and twenty-five that received an increase, or a notice of increase.
I, I guess my question is, if we're out of compliance, we have to raise it, shouldn't everyone be raised within the city?
Residential properties, everybody did receive an increase.
Everyone?
Everyone.
Okay.
And those who did not get a notice of increase, that did not meet that ten percent and three thousand, did receive a notice of valuation, letting them know what their value was and whether it went up or down.
Okay.
So everybody's noticed-
So it is spread across the board that everybody should have got an increase?
Every residential property received that increase, yes.
Okay. So if somebody didn't get their increase, they should come and let you know?
Well, anybody who didn't have an increase, there was a change to their card where the, the card was corrected down below or in excess of what the six percent increase was. So if they had a ten percent decrease because it was overvalued, there would have been the six percent increase, and so it would have been like a net four percent then.
Okay.
But-
And people, your office is open. Does anybody that wants to come and talk to you about this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So for everybody in the audience and everybody watching, if you have any, anything you need to discuss, make sure you come in and talk to Mr. Hirschfeld and his staff.
It would be much appreciated to have that done before the meeting next Tuesday.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners.
We have a contract up, our Johnson Control, and this will be handled by Solid Waste Recycling Manager Prowse.
Good evening again. This is a unified contract between Johnson Controls and the City of Dickinson to provide the monitoring, testing, and inspections for our fire systems located in nine city buildings. The buildings include Public Works, Animal Shelter, the Baylor Building, Central Fire Station, City Hall, the library, the museum, Public Safety Center, and the Public Transit Building. Some of these buildings have existing contracts in place, while others have recently expired. All the contracts have deferring expiration dates. This agreement will bring all the contracts together for a five-year term that is effective immediately, once approved, and expiring on January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-eight. The annual content, annual cost of the City of Dickinson for the inspection, testing, and monitoring of all five, or all nine buildings is eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-one cents. Attorney Winko has reviewed the contract, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any questions for Mr. Prowse on this Johnson Controls contract? Hearing no questions, I look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Sobelock?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We now have what everybody in the room has been waiting for, the snow removal report. So Mr. Zeroff gets to play weatherman.
Yes. Thank you, President Decker and Commission, and last time I looked, it was not snowing outside. I hope it stays that way.
I hate to burst your bubble, but it was coming down a little bit when I walked in.
My understanding is going to be minimal. We are prepared for anything that they give us, but I, my understanding is going to-
Positive thinking.
Yes. Have to be positive. Although the season was very difficult. So I'm, I'd like to do our snow report for twenty-two, twenty-three, to give you an update of where we're at. First of all, I wanted to talk about the record snowfall levels we have this year. This season has been extremely challenging with the record snowfall levels, and I did hand everybody a sheet of where Dickinson is with our seasonal snow rankings. And it really didn't hit me until I looked at this sheet from the Weather Service that we are currently at ninety-six point two inches for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three season. Previous record was seventy-four point eight inches, and these records started in eighteen ninety-three. So to me, that puts some perspective that in a hundred and twenty-six years, we've had the most snow in, ever in Dickinson that has been on record. So I just want to put that down, and I really want to thank everybody that's been involved in the snowfighting effort this year. It's been, like I said, challenging with the record level of snowfalls. We have dealt with extreme temperatures, staffing challenges, fifty percent in street vacancies, vacancy in, in solid waste department, and material challenges. Some of the materials have been difficult to get. It's, it's behind the scenes, but there's been salt issues, other issues that we've had to get. So it's been extremely challenging this winter, and in some respects exhausting after this, this winter. So that's why I wanted to thank and recognize all the Public Works employees that have contributed to our snowfighting efforts this season. Those in the audience, I guess, please stand up, all those that have helped with snowfighting this year. Just for a minute. Along with our street department, we have buildings and grounds personnel, we have utilities, we have solid waste, some admin staff, and forestry. Did I miss anybody else? I think we got everybody that, that have helped.
All hands on, right?
All hands on deck. And normally, all hands on deck only happens once or twice a year. Sometimes it was every week we had all hands on deck. And these, this group of people, the staff, you know, have been out when the interstate is closed, when it's blizzarding, below zero. Everybody should be at home. And they're the ones out plowing the streets around the hospital and keeping things going, keeping it open for emergency services. And I would say they're our first first responder. So thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Now you have to stay till the end of the report. So we're going to talk a little bit about some of our material usage and, and some facts for February and March, and then I want to do a total for the season is kind of the way this is lined up. So in February, we have our materials usage and total cost. You can see there. Then we'll have February totals for dollars, snow, ice, labor, cutting edges, brine, beet juice, salt, and fuel. And anytime there's a question, just ask. Material usage for March. Our salt, our tonnages, cutting edges, brine and beet juice, of course. Contractors for March. You can see we've had four hundred and thirty-six hours at eighty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Two's Rock Solid, Terry Waterworks, and Wind Construction. I also want to thank them for their help this year. I don't want to forget that. You know, they're contractors. They get paid, but they also go over and above to try to help everybody out during these events. March totals. See, it was a lot of work in March. Total of a hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars, including our overtime and our contractors. And then this is just totals for twenty twenty-three, from January till now.
This is Zeroff?
Yep.
Just got a quick question for you. Go back one slide there.
Okay.
So, and this is going to prime you for budget season, but would we have enough equipment to where we'd be able to have staff on the, on the roads to where we could bring that contractor amount down?
Definitely. And, and that's a good point. And we've had those discussions. Right now, I think we could, we could definitely a couple of those storms, I think we could have done without contractors if we had a full staff.
Yeah.
I guess thinking the, the commission and the mayor has approved the equipment in the past. We have the equipment. We have a lot of equipment that we don't have staff for. So if we had the staff, we, I think, especially a lot of those smaller storms, we wouldn't have had contractors at all.
Yeah. Thank you.
Done that. Yep. Street overtime expense to date, just in twenty-three, this does not include all the other enterprise fund and buildings and grounds that have helped with the overtime. This is just for streets. That's one thing that, when we do all hands on deck, you know, we're pulling from other departments that also have jobs, and their overtime is charged to those departments. And that's skewing things also, especially this year. I, I, it would be nice if any overtime that happened on the snow and ice control could come out of one fund, not the other fund. So an example, if forestry is out there helping there, overtime comes out of forestry, and it skews some of the things for the year. But that, there again, if we had a full staff in the street, we'd have less of that happening. But all hands on deck works from the help of everybody here, but budgetary, it becomes a little difficult with the, you know, overtime showing in those departments when it's overtime for snow and ice control. So already, we're used, you know, first three months of this year. Contracted labor, first three months, we have expanded fifty-nine percent. Twenty-three-three budget, this year, we did increase the contracted labor from a hundred and a hundred and forty thousand, and we're already at almost eighty-two thousand. Again, this would reduce if we can fill our positions in Public Works, which I'm hoping to at some point. Now we'll see the totals for the winter season. Overtime call-outs for twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, we had one thousand, four hundred and forty-seven hours of overtime in all Public Works divisions. Totals for the snow season. You can see our snow and ice hours, our overtime, the contractors. And that's one thing we can cut down when we can get full staff. And there again, if we, we have to be competitive in the market. We have to be able to pay our staff, and I think we, we can get that number way down if we can fill all our positions. You can see our brine and beet juice is pretty high, too, salt, sand, and fuel, at almost, almost five hundred thousand dollars so far this year. Total snowfall, and I, I mentioned that at the beginning, the presentation, season's snowfall is ninety-six point two inches. Last year was fifty inches. March snowfall is thirty-eight point seven, and previous record was seventy-four point eight inches. Had a lot of snow. I want to mention our snow pile on Broadway. When we, we've been working on that a number of years using Millings to level that out and getting it prepared for a snow pile. As it was getting bigger and bigger, actually, at the time, I was wondering why are we making this so big? But this year, now I know why, because we've filled that up very well. You can see the pile is about seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-four cubic yards of snow in that pile. I think we have over forty-two hundred loads, truckloads were taken to that pile. For example, in one storm, just thirteen, thirteenth Street West alone, we had eighty-nine loads hauled out in that little bit of street. And I guess a lot of these guys spent hours and hours hauling in trucks, hauling snow. You know, if we could, if we continued to get this amount of snow, I was considering making that higher and higher, and then there could be your sledding hill if this continues, so. I guess that's all with snow right now. I guess any questions for, for me, or we have everybody behind me that can answer any question you might have for any of the staff?
Any questions, Commissioners?
I, I do have a comment.
Okay.
I said this at the last meeting, but they're sitting here, so I'd like to say it to them, to their face. Want to thank you guys for everything that you've done, but I also want to thank you for everything that you've done in, in light of some abuse that you guys have taken from the City of Dickinson, some, you know, it's not appropriate for people to flip the bird to people that's, they're out there clearing their streets and, or throwing snow at them with their snow blowers and stuff like that, so thank you for sticking with- you for sticking with the work and getting it done despite all that. So, thank you.
And staying professional.
Yeah.
I know it can be, it can be, it can be tough sometimes. People only see their street.
They see their street and some of the guys that are, some of the people that do the one finger wave to some of the staff, that same staff is the one out there clearing the roads for around the hospital.
Yeah.
It'll be the one plowing the road for you if you have to go to the hospital. So remember that.
Yeah.
So I guess got a couple more slides then on where we're at. Since I was up here, wanted to let everybody know, with all this amount of snow and moisture, of course, then what happens? We have an enormous amount of potholes happening. Freeze thaw and moisture. And so last Friday, they did start Level One and Two roads, continue to fill potholes. Again, at one point, we thought we were gonna have issues with material, but we have plenty of pothole material at this point, thank goodness. And they're gonna continue to work on those as they pop up. Level Two will be completed early April, which we're working on now. In residential, they're gonna start filling after those are done, those those are done. Nine tons of product have been filled using Level One roads. So right, that last sentence right there kind of tells you the kind of year we're having. On average, seven tons of product are used annually, and we've already used nine tons just on Level One roads at the beginning of this month. So, things are a little different this year. We're keeping up the best everybody can. In stormwater maintenance, Public Works is continuing to open drains that have been iced over. We're out there all the time looking at stormwater. We're taking calls on stormwater. We have a lot of staff looking at different snow, ice, stormwater issues all the time. If you have questions or concern, please don't hesitate to call seven nine seven nine, and we'll look at your service request and and do the best we can. So, I believe that's the end of the report.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zeroff. Any questions for Mrs. Zeroff or city staff? All right. Thank you again, all of you so much. Thank you. Our next up is public safety, and this, we have, this month, we have the Fire Department's monthly report. Welcome, Chief Presnel.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. Before you tonight to present the Fire Department's monthly report for March. Just a reminder of everything we do offer, it goes beyond just response to fires. We respond to a hundred and sixty-three calls for service for the month of March. That puts us just under five hundred calls for the year. And it's about a forty percent increase. That percentage is a little deceiving. This is compared to where we're at, where we were at last year. And at this time last year, we were not responding to this many medical calls. So as we get towards the month where we actually started responding to medical calls, I, that percentage is gonna come down and will start leveling out. So I just, I did want to point that out. Here's just a breakdown by month. We continue to bring down our our calls for service as compared to we, where we ended the year last year and kind of started the year this year. And we were a little bit higher this month than we were last. EMS calls did account for eighty percent. We were able to bring down a lot more of our call numbers across the board, but EMS calls were up this month. We did see an increase in some drug overdoses, and we had several CPR calls this month that kept us pretty busy. Calls by station, with the introduction of the QRU, the balance of calls have now moved up to the Public Safety Center where that apparatus is responding out of primarily. So, prior to the use of the QRU, most of our calls were being ran by Station One, but now the majority is is coming out of the Public Safety Center, out of the pickup. Here's a visual representation of where our calls are happening throughout the city. Response times. We did see a slight increase in our response times. A lot of this is of the day that our calls were happening, the majority of them were a little busier traffic throughout the city in our responses, and did slow us down a little bit. We have noticed that with the use of the QRU, the vehicles are not getting out of the way like they would with a big fire apparatus. So we are gonna introduce a little different siren type that they call a rumbler. It's a little lower frequency. You can actually feel it instead of just hear it. So that should be installed here pretty soon and should help with with cars noticing us behind them.
Chief Presnel.
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the heat map?
Yes.
You know, the the talk we're having about, and just looking at that, you know, when we're talking about what we're gonna do with Fire Station One in the in the future and stuff, I think this heat map should play into that, especially with your comments about traffic.
Yeah.
And consideration.
We we did have a study done with our current location where Station One is and some of the alternative locations, and just our response, our four-minute response time on road based on traffic conditions and just the population density in the area. So I can gladly share that in my next report to kind of show you where the best location would be, or where, what it's gonna look like with some of the alternative sites that we've identified.
Okay.
So like I said, our response times have gone down a little bit, but we are, you know, hoping to fix that with with the introduction of the rumbler siren. Calls by day of the week, Wednesday was our busiest day. There were no indicators as to why Wednesday was, but it did turn out to be our busiest day. And then our busiest time throughout the day, you know, between like one o'clock and about eight o'clock at night is where we see the majority of our calls. We did have a little bit of a spike between midnight and one AM, and a lot of those calls do happen on weekends or Friday where we see that spike in that timeframe. Training hours. We had a pretty busy month with training hours. We completed eleven hundred and forty-two hours of training total for the month throughout all the categories. You can kind of see where we're falling at overall for the year. I do want to point out, we're working really hard to get our training hours up, because this goes into our ISO rating, and it's kind of some give me points by just conducting the training. And we're hoping to to really bring our ISO rating down to a Class Two. We weren't very far off of it on our last ISO rating. There would not be a significant impact on residential homes, but our commercial and industrial occupancies would see the biggest impact of of that change. And we would be the only combination fire department in the state of North Dakota to have a Class Two. So that's one of our goals over the next year. It sounds like we're probably gonna go through another ISO evaluation in twenty-four or due. Fire prevention, conducted eighty-four routine inspections for the month, fifty-four other prevention activities, and issued four certificate of occupancies. They had a pretty busy month. And then with that, I would gladly answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief Presnel Commission. Any questions for Chief Presnel or staff?
Just maybe update everybody on what you're responding to medical calls in, so maybe they can watch out for you now.
Uh, right now, it's a white Dodge with lights and sirens.
Oh, I thought you guys had another truck.
We we're still waiting on lights and and the decals. Everything's kind of delayed, but right now, we we wanted to get that, get them going in the QRU and the half-ton pickup, so we put them in one of our existing vehicles while we're waiting, so we can.
Which I think that one will still be white, just with the sirens.
Yes, it it'll be a lot brighter and hopefully a little louder.
Just for the public to pay attention for, you know, a truck. Sometimes I think they're used to in the past, maybe seeing like the volunteers with the flashers and the lights, and they don't necessarily.
The old alert crew truck.
Yeah. So, yeah, just for the general public, so they're paying attention, that that QRU unit's responding to medical calls, so. Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving to community development. First item up is Sundance Cove, the Lighting Special Improvement District, and this is number two oh two three oh one dash one. This will be handled by Engineering and Community Development Director Sculicek.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. So, last time, we met on March twenty-first. This topic was brought up and then tabled. Their request was to look at how Cook Meadows was allocated from an assessment standpoint or from a special improvement district standpoint. So we're we're coming back. We provided some additional information and and hope this addresses the question. So, as a reminder, this is the map of the area in question, or the area for the special improvement district. In particular, the area shaded in blue, a light blue shade, has the area of the condos, and that area is owned by that developer and based on the development agreement that was amended. Amendment date was September sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and we did include that in your packet. That specific amendment date included that shaded blue section to pay a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the street improvement lighting.
And with that agreement, we were gonna allow them to condo these out and sell them individually? Is that correct?
Yes, then after, after the payment, then they could, I believe that that's the agreement.
Are they gonna make the payment, or are they gonna assess them to the units?
I thought that that was a payment.
That would be the payment, is my understanding. And as part of that, we had to amend the condo declaration to allow them to make those changes. So it was a hand-in-hand approach, but the amendment came kind of simultaneously as the development agreement was amended.
So according to the agreement, it was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand for the lights, eleven thousand for Parks and Recs.
Correct, yes.
And have they made that payment?
They have not, because the next portion of this was to create the special improvement district. So we need, we need that to happen in order to be able to to move forward with the next step.
So something I'm unclear on here, the original development agreement, did it include lighting for the entire section here that we're looking at on the, not not just the blue section, but the rest of the neighborhood as well?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
So included in the packet, there's the revised engineering report, and that includes the allocation to all the individual lots within this development. And total estimated cost for the the lighting improvements was five hundred sixteen thousand dollars approximately. And then you take out that portion, a hundred fifty thousand for the blue shaded area related to the condos, that remains three hundred sixty-six thousand approximately for the remaining lots.
But it's actually one thirty-nine, right? Because eleven thousand goes to Parks and Recs?
It's it's a hundred and fifty. The the eleven thousand was incorporated to to take care of the portion that was due and payable to Park and Rec through their implementation of parks' systems. But if I recall correctly, I I believe it's the one fifty. We just incorporated that in there to take care of the issue with Dickinson Park and Rec.
Okay.
So in this case, for the individual lots, we ran kind of a min to max from a, from the special improvement district, it'd be about two thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars at the minimum, seven, seven thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars at the maximum. In that case, there was two lots that were combined into one, so that's why that was a higher. And this is allocated for the standpoint of by square footage. Average then was three thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars. In the case of Cook Meadows, that included both Cook Meadows and Country Oaks Estates, so there was a kind of a larger overall special improvement district. In that case, in two thousand sixteen, it was approximately thirteen cents per square foot. Based on our estimate right now, we're looking at approximately thirty-nine cents per square foot. So.
And how was that split? In the Cook Meadows is one.
Cook Meadows and Country Oaks Estate, that was allocated a combination of square footage and lot frontage. In this case, we looked at, because of the circumstances with the pair of cul-de-sacs, you'd have very small amounts of frontage in those cases, but then the lots are oftentimes a little bit larger and stuff. So so we looked at just a square footage allocation.
Why didn't we just do it by lot?
Do it by lot, like a straight allocation per lot?
Yeah, like, that's what we did on the condos, by unit.
In this case, we chose to move forward with the per-square footage so that there was equal pay. If you have a larger lot, you're receiving better, more benefit. If you have a smaller lot, you're receiving less benefit.
I mean, I can see that with streets, but street lights, I'm not sure.
We, we, we looked at this from an assessment standpoint, similar to what we did on Cook, Cook Meadows. In this case, if you'd like us to go back to the drawing board, we could look at doing an equal allocation per lot. Certainly an opportunity. The one thing I'd point out, in that circumstance, there's two tracks individually. We did allocate costs to those individual tracks. The tracks are used for stormwater detention. And the LLC assigned to that is the developer, so we thought this was a reasonable way to allocate costs based on square footage.
So in the Cooks, it was a fifty-fifty split? We assessed fifty percent to the homeowners and fifty percent with what, paid by the city?
Fifty-fifty, where that, that was a little bit confusing in the previous meeting minutes. Fifty percent of the square footage, fifty percent of the lot frontage. And again, in this case, we thought it would be best to move to just square footage based on the circumstances I described before.
So it was a hundred percent to the homeowners?
Hundred percent to the homeowners. But yeah, I'd read, I'd read that same statement a couple times, because it wasn't very clear in the meeting minutes from when that special improvement district was approved.
Here's the thing I struggle with here, is this isn't these homeowners screw up. This is the city screw up. And they're gonna have to pay the bill for our screw up, because we didn't enforce our development agreement.
Although I don't have specific documentation to prove that there either was or was not costs allocated into those individual lots, in in this case, the, there's been limited feedback, but some of the feedback was there, the property owners are just looking for the lights. So acknowledging the fact that this was a miss on our part from a city standpoint going back several years ago, and, but I I think ultimately.
And it was a miss on our part on Cooks, too.
Correct.
I, my, my hangup is, is the Cooks people had to pay.
I thi- I think at a minimum, it should be, it should be equal, it should be fifty-fifty, just like Cooks.
Well, they got a hundred percent. He just said that.
Yeah, yeah. Again, the, in the meeting minutes from.
The way it was allocated was fifty-fifty.
Fifty, fifty percent square footage, fifty percent lot frontage. And again, in this case, it would throw some of your numbers off. You know, you're just kind of, just kind of playing numbers with, from an allocation standpoint. But in general, again, we thought it was best in this case, and a little bit simpler to just put square footage and and move forward in that direction.
What I'm talking about is the remaining costs. This project's five hundred and some thousand dollars. Am I correct?
So the remaining costs would go along with the landowners.
Right. And there's a hundred and fifty thousand subtracted from that. What I'm saying is, whatever that cost is, is fifty-fifty. Fifty percent. The property owner's fifty percent city.
Well, I mean, do we have any other route to get this from the developer?
It's already negotiated and signed.
Negotiated and signed, approved by the City Commission on September sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
You know, I mean, I look back at that packet. I mean, there was just an agreement in there. None of it, there was no explanation that we'd be here trying to figure out what to do with another three hundred and sixty-six thousand, which is, I mean, I don't think I would agree to that back in September if I would have known that.
Yeah.
I think in the case of this specific development agreement, although I wasn't here at the time when that was negotiated and those kind of things, the.
My, my biggest heartache in this whole thing is, they got by four hundred thousand dollars under what they were supposed to do, and now we're gonna give them the ability to sell these units off, which there's like eighty of them? And now we're gonna give them the ability to sell these units off, which there's like eighty of them. Even if they average two hundred thousand a unit, that's like fourteen million dollars, sixteen million dollars in gross income to them. And we only got a hundred and fifty out of them.
In the case of the negotiations with the the individual developer, I can't necessarily speak to that. City Attorney Winko and interim or. Ms. Carlson, if you guys want to speak to that, I know you guys had some conversations in that case, so.
Mr. President Commissioners, I did not have any direct communication with the developer, but I I did have conversations with Ms. Marshick as she was discussing it with the developer. And there were concerns about liquidity and financial resources available to the developer. Same thing that we've heard from other developers who have essentially defaulted on some terms and conditions of other developments. So I think the thought process with the staff at the time was what can we do to get something out of this developer? Because the way that the initial development agreement was drafted back in two thousand thirteen, it did provide for a surety bond, but it didn't provide for the surety bond as it relates to this particular parcel of the project. And so unfortunately, there wasn't a whole lot of teeth to that initial development agreement. And I think staff felt that this was the best way to get some financial recruitment of this project to to hold the developer accountable. Because the reality is without that, we're stuck. And getting some money in this respect, I think, was better than getting nothing. Because at the end of the day, the citizens need lights. And whether that's going to be the developer footing the bill to some degree, the city or the homeowner. And this was one way to relieve some of that financial responsibility from the homeowners as well as the city. And I I think that was the thought process behind it. But unfortunately, I didn't have any direct communication with the developer. It was all getting third third hand, but that is what I recall.
So if we were to go fifty fifty, and I I would lean towards Mayor Decker's stance on that if if we're gonna do with this special assessment, how long would they have to pay this, five, ten years? Like, how how far would could we spread that out?
We we could set the parameters, right? Yep, yeah, we could assign it to ten. I believe ten was the the allocation for Cook Meadows and Country Oaks Estates. I could double check that, but we could again do the same thing. I guess in general, if it brings any any piece to the circumstances, the hundred fifty thousand that the developer paid, at least that's on a cost per square foot standpoint for the condos versus the remainder of the development, it's actually a pretty equal allocation. It comes up almost almost perfectly equal at thirty-nine cents per square feet, coincidentally only.
They threw a fastball by us. We we didn't catch it. Then we renegotiated. They're gonna give us a hundred and fifty for the benefit of them being able to sell these off as individual units instead of as one big project. Who won? Ones that it's gonna get sixteen million dollars at the end when they sell all these units off or did the city who got a hundred and fifty thousand? I don't think we won.
I guess in in that case, that'll be something that we could certainly take back and make sure that in in future development agreements and everything else that the the level of diligence is in place and and that aspects of the engineering and design are being fully reviewed, making sure that all components such as street lighting and and other things are are included during the time of construction. And at this point going forward, that's that's all that that I can assure.
I I guess I'd like to 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 leave and and maybe table this again. And I'd like to see the fifty fifty split costs and come back, you know, with the our our funding source, so.
Funding source as discussed previously with with Linda was GPT, so.
I'd move to table.
I have motion to table.
So the just for clarification, if I could, the the fifty fifty, what you're saying is fifty percent of the remaining three hundred sixty-six thousand you'd like to be paid by the city?
Yes.
Allocation, are you okay with the square footage or would you like to have?
I would leave that for discussion. Are we are we fine per lot or by square footage?
I mean, they there if there's a combined lot, then.
Right.
They get off free on one, but. I mean, I just don't normally, like a square footage allotment on like street lighting. I could see it on pavement or sidewalks or. I mean, a guy with a a guy with a twenty-five thousand dollar, a twenty-five thousand square foot lot compared to a guy with a twenty-four thousand square foot lot. I mean, it gets the same benefit of the light. It doesn't really benefit it anymore because it's a thousand square feet bigger.
With the tracks of land that are included in here, if we go by lot, do the tracks of land count as a lot? Or how do those get incorporated if we would go by lot?
We could we could include those as individual lots. And then at that case, then a greater allocation will go out to the individual lot owners versus the the two tracked owners.
And and the tracks are owned by Sundance Coles or who are the tracks owned by?
Tracks are owned by Sundance Coles LLC.
And in the agreement we signed, are they gonna continue to maintain them, pay the property taxes on on them? Because that was supposed to be homeowners association also.
I'd have to review that specific.
Because what what's gonna happen is they're gonna quit maintaining them and quit paying the taxes and guess who's gonna get them? Because they won't pay the specials either. We're gonna get them.
So, yeah, I can I can review the development agreement in that case that was amended in in September of two thousand twenty-two and provide additional comments that way. But but you're correct, the homeowners association was never set up.
Are all the lots built on out there?
Pretty much, I think.
So there's this kind of a dated photo if.
Yeah, that's a dated photo.
I'm not sure the date of the area.
I don't, there may be one, one or two lots maybe not built on, but I think it's pretty full.
I guess we have a motion to table and and just might looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. My further comment would be to come back to fifty fifty, come keep give us one with the square footage and then one by lot.
We could certainly do that.
Now, just I'd be curious to know what we, I mean, the project was a lot less on the Cook one, obviously. But I'd like to know what we assessed to those lot owners back in that day, roughly. An average, or did you have that?
I don't have that off the top of my head, no. But I I can provide that next week or next next meeting.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Vote to table all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Move on to the lead water main service award.
All right, so thank you again for the opportunity to present. This project, part of the two thousand twenty-three capital improvement project list and approved in the in the capital improvement projects budget. In particular, for this project, we're looking at replacing the water main and the service lines in the areas that are the the yellow with red hashes. And and this is part of that lead service line replacement as well. We had a a bid opening on March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And BEK Consulting LLC was the parent low bid and they were the only bid. There were two bid alternatives, alternative A and alternative B. This segment along State Avenue, as shown in the map, we were looking to do a pipe bursting option. The benefit of the pipe bursting option for State Avenue was to minimize the open trenching, thus minimizing the duration and overall impact of traffic on that busy street. And in that case, the the bid for for that pipe bursting option was approximately about a fifty thousand dollar savings compared to open trenching. So we recommend moving forward with the with that alternative and and.
Can you explain what that is? I've never heard that before.
Horizontal boring and then just pulling that sleeve back through.
So boring it instead of digging it up?
At the services, you do have to then trench down and and make that connection and stuff. But but significantly less disturbance to the pavement, thus the cost savings for the contractor. In this case, I with this project, you'd have to be contingent upon the approval from the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality to authorize the bid award through the state revolving fund loan for the project. But engineering staff recommends approval on that.
So we have a recommendation to award the contract to BEK with the option of the the pipe bursting. And that amount is two point four, almost two point five million dollars, two million four hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred twenty dollars. And that is contingent upon the final approval of the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, as mentioned, so.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a street maintenance bid opening.
All right, again, good evening, Commissioners. The street maintenance project or the road maintenance project for two thousand twenty-three. If you remember, this project in particular, the the streets identified or marked on the map in green, that'll be chip seals. And then there's a segment of Millan overlay on Sixth Avenue Southeast with a a short section of of street reconstruction just near the bridge at the Hart River. South of the bridge, approximately three hundred feet of of street reconstruction. And in this case, we had a bid opening on March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. We felt fortunate, we had three bidders and the apparent little bit is Central Specialties Incorporated. Their bid was three million seventy-six thousand two hundred two dollars and twenty-four cents. Although that was just slightly over the engineer's estimate, less than one percent over. So we we felt pretty confident in in where that's at. And so we look for approval on on this contract with Central Specialties, Central Specialties Incorporated.
At least it was close.
To the engineer's estimate, so.
About twenty-four thousand.
Commissioners, any question?
I I do have one. This one hundred and thirteenth Avenue Southwest, that chip seal there, is that a city road?
That segment in blue that you're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's a there's a portion of that that actually goes outside of city limits. But based on the agreement that we have and when that was initially constructed, the agreement in place is that we maintain that segment of roadway.
I think that was a part of the original.
Yeah.
Truck truck route.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a couple of those agreements on outlying roads. Some are fifty fifty and some of them are all us, so.
I'd I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And we'll finish up with the monthly report.
All right, well, thank you again, Commissioners. So the engineering community development team, again, a busy month. And as you as you identified before with a couple of bid openings and everything else, we got some projects to the finish line and 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 so we appreciate that. Touching on building and codes, one thing before we get into the graph. So the code enforcement position that was part of the two thousand twenty-three budget and approved. So that code enforcement position just just earlier this week, the rec was posted for that. And so we're moving forward with with that position and look forward to applicants. So anybody anybody listening in the public, looking forward to anybody to apply. Related to the the actual number of permits and then value or the total cost of permits that have been picked up, we we look right now to be down compared to previous years. But again, I think this is a weather related aspect that we're we're just seeing at the moment. That's what I committed communicated last month as well. And even in the last almost a week now since these numbers were pulled, we've actually seen quite a few individual permits come in. So I think as the weather improves, I think we will see that ramp up. And and there seems to be a lot of chatter in the direction of a lot of activity coming. So so we look to have a busy year. One thing to note also on positions, the building inspector two position. So now that we have the code enforcement position rec completed and and position posted and everything, modifying that job description, trying to clean that up, make it a little bit simpler. We had some challenges with getting applicants throughout the year of two thousand twenty-two. And so trying to just make that job description a little bit easier for everybody to read and and those kind of things. And and still get quality applicants, but hopefully get more applicants. So we're working on that and within the next week or two, we anticipate that rec will be completed as well. Leading to planning and zoning, so we did have three new pre-application meetings. So kind of a little bit slower start, I would say, to that year, but I think I think things will be picking up as well. The planner position that's been posted now, that position closes on April eleventh. At the time that I put the presentation together, there were six planner applications. That number has actually grown since then. And right now, later on, the week of the eleventh after that closes, we actually have eight interviews scheduled. Those are all the virtual interviews, but but nonetheless, we have eight interviews. In that case, I do wanna kind of tell the efforts from our HR team. They reached out to the universities and and colleges in the area that offer degrees similar to what we're looking for and a lot of the advertising and those kind of things. So so good effort there. And and we did have that moving stipend included in that position. That must have been just enough to kind of encourage people. So but a number of the applicants are from the upper Midwest, which is, I think, a good sign. So looking forward to to communicating a an offer on that position. I did want to also note, you know, we did have the special use approved, special use permit approved for the Sunny Springs daycare. And the only reason I bring that up is just because of the challenges of the community with daycare and everything else. So that's a good sign and and we've actually just look forward to 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 the additional daycare in the community. Engineering, we've got a number of projects that are underway. We have an official start date now for the drainage ditch and erosion repair. We can April tenth, communicated with the contractor actually earlier today. And that's a that's a committed date, so so we're comfortable with that. Hopefully, we will have nice enough weather, but not too warm of weather because we don't all want all the water flowing. So but but looking forward to get that project executed. Legacy Square, as I mentioned before, working in collaboration with City Administrator Dossinger, helping out both on the technical and non-technical side. Water main lead service line replacement project, you guys just approved that contract for that as well as the two thousand twenty-three road maintenance project. Projects that'll be coming up to bid in the near term, South Cemetery, as well as the Legacy Square parking lot. We're hoping to have those designs complete and out to bid in the near term. And then North Industries Water and Sewer. Actually, last week, we had a public involvement meeting on that project. It's out to bid right now and actually bid opening is later on this week. So so we'll see where those numbers come in. We did have a a pre-bid meeting, two contractors attended. We'll see where where the bid numbers come in at for that. Related to the public involvement meeting from from the property owners in that area, I guess I would thank those that did actually show up. We only had a handful of people that did show up, really appreciated their input and feedback. Unfortunately, it would have been nice to have more people attend. But some of the folks, I did speak with a handful of other property owners in the area. And some of them weren't able to attend for different reasons, they were traveling or whatever the case may be. We did send out two individual mailers prior to the public involvement meeting. And then for those that did not attend the public involvement meeting and receive information on the project. for those that did not attend the public involvement meeting and receive information on the project, so then we're reaching out with actual letters on what's coming for the water and sewer project in two thousand twenty-three, but then also uh what we're looking to do from a street improvement and stormwater improvement uh standpoint for two thousand twenty-four, and talking about what those possible special improvement district uh costs might be to them. So looking for basically a polling standpoint on, you know, what's the appetite for for the for the uh street improvements and stormwater improvements, and uh and then we'll start moving forward uh from there based on the feedback, so. Uh with our GIS team, so we actually had some some software upgrades and um some of the data query features, kind of some nice tools and those kind of things, and um and then uh GIS uh specialist, Dara Hulkholder has been working with Public Works for some some uh some systems to basically track some of their work. One thing, uh step back one second on the engineering team, so um Haley Richter had been working for us as an admin. She applied for the uh engineering technician position that was vacant. Uh she uh accepted that offer, and uh so now she's actually working as an engineering technician, so that's a that's a good opportunity to see people move up within the team. And uh we do have that admin position reposted now to backfill her spot, so um if there's nobody at the window, I apologize, we're doing the best we can with limited staff, so.
And and that has been posted, the admin position?
Correct.
Okay.
I saw it on Facebook.
Correct, so.
I must have missed that one. I tried to at least forward the Facebook posts to to get people interested in our position, so I think those are s- are helpful to if you see that and whatever social media you're on, to keep reposting those, so people see that we do have positions available, so.
Absolutely.
Any uh questions for for Josh? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last item up this evening, Commissioners. Anything you wish to bring up that wasn't on the agenda, or any item that was on the agenda? Not, I guess we'll see you next Tuesday for our Board of Equalization, so.
My favorite time of the year.
Favorite time of the year, so look for a motion to.
So moved. Moved to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.